It is six o'clock. I will call the December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Withfield County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a quorum with all members present. Tonight, we have Pastor Stephen Cornett from the New Bethel Community Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, our loving heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you give us each and every day. We thank you for this joyous Christmas season when we rejoice the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, who was born in a manger in Bethlehem. We ask you to bless this board tonight and the meeting tonight. We ask you to give guidance, wisdom, and support to the supervisors. Also, Lord, we ask you to continue to bless Withfield County, the state of Virginia, and the United States of America, the greatest country that's ever been. Be with all of our first responders that put their lives on the line each and every day. And, Lord, bless and keep us and keep us in your will as we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is always is citizens' time. I will call you up individually, and as always, you have three minutes. Mr. Cook will keep the time. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. Mac Pruitt.
That part will take all three minutes. We just wanted to come just to address where I have taken over the president's position at Fort Chisel Youth League. Lucas is vice president, Natasha is treasurer. We got in it to try and do better for the kids. And our big thing is we feel like decisions are being made. We just had a meeting upstairs. I think we came to some resolution temporarily. And I'll speak on behalf of Royal Retreat as well. We just feel that we need to be more involved. We are participants in the league. Even though we are self-funded as Royal Retreat and Fort Chisel, we raise all our funds. And without funding from the county, we have with or without. We have other options. We don't necessarily want to jet. But we just feel like some things need to be addressed, whether it's rules that is taken away from the game. In my opinion, catering to the can hots and not the ones that put effort into it. It's not, it's taking away from the game and making the game not really the game. It feels like with some rules, kids that put forth the effort outside of their scheduled times for practice get punished for being good. Now, I get the fair play. Everybody needs equal time. I get it. But I just feel like there is a better way, from a rule standpoint, to make the game feel like the game. When you have referees look at you and go, what kind of rules are these? If they don't know the rules, then we're explaining the rules to them. We're missing something. We just want more input. Now, I know the rec commission, we've got some newly appointed members, which hopefully will allow them to start making more decisions. Without it, Kevin obviously has been passed to make the decision on his own because he doesn't have enough on the rec commission to take a vote. But all we've asked is now that Bland's in, Towne Wiffle's in, Fort Chisel, Royal Retreat, the differences are two are self-funded, two are fully funded. And we just need, we need everybody on the same page. And from an outside looking in, it doesn't always look to be that way. So my big thing is if we're going to be a participant in the league, we need to have more of a voice in decisions that are being made. And it just here, and I haven't been doing it for about eight, eight to ten months. I've been involved, not recently. But it just feels like without us, the league would not be much. But with us, it is. So we just ask for some more input in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. All right, next person we have signed up is Mr. Lucas Hughes.
Good afternoon. I'm here as my present in Fort Chisel Youth League. And I'm sure there's been a lot of emails sent out by parents from the community about the issues that are going on. I hope y'all actually look into those, please. Like Mac said, we had a meeting upstairs. Hopefully, we're moving a positive direction on it. But it's something we're going to have to stay active because we have not had a voice in at all. And between us and Royal Retreat, we're two-thirds of this rec league. You know, we're putting in more players than all the others. And we're losing those kids fast. I mean, your rec league right now, and it's all over, is killing rec, not travel killing rec. We've got to get this talent coming back, and there's ways to do it. There's a lot, there's talent in every group here with Royal Retreat, but it's leaving. It's leaving fast. So like six, seven at a time. And I thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. That's all the citizens that signed up, so I'll close citizens' time. I will just say before we move on, I know that Mr. Hughes is newly appointed. I know Mr. Pruitt has not been appointed very long. But I will say that we appreciate your volunteering because it's hard to find people to serve in these positions.
Absolutely.
And, you know, keep us, keep the board. You're basically our arm that we don't have to go to those meetings. So reach out to your board members, reach out to all of us because we need to hear those concerns. I hear them from Mr. Hildreth. But, you know, when you send those emails, send them to all of us. You know, it, but thank you for your dedication because it's about the kids at the end of the day.
That's right.
And I mean, I don't know if anybody else has got anything to say.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to echo what the chairman's saying. I do appreciate everything that y'all do, all four of you that's here and then everybody else that's not here. And it is all about the kids, right? It's, I know sometimes as a parent, you get caught up in it. But when you got good people like y'all that's spending your time to do what you're doing to better the children of the county, you know, we do appreciate that. And by all means, keep the emails coming, the phone calls, the texts. However, you need to get in hold of me or Mr. Terry. I think I can speak for him. I know me and him have been involved with quite a bit of it. Just let us know, and like Mr. Chairman said, you can copy all of us on it. But if you give, if it comes to me, I usually share on that piece, but.
And I didn't mean to leave Natasha and Patrick out. I was addressing two people spoke.
Yeah.
So don't think that I didn't.
And, you know.
Thanks for coming out, Glenn.
Mr. Hughes said it best. It's not the youth, the travel ball that's killing the youth league. It's we got to get the youth league back under control because a lot of these kids are going to go play or they're going to not be punished or feel like they're being punished. So we've got to get control of that. So I do appreciate your honesty and being candid with some of your statements. So keep up the good work and reach out anytime.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all again for your service. It's greatly appreciated to echo what Mr. Smith and Chairman have all said. I do have a question, though. The rules, I know Mr. Pruitt said that they had been addressed. Are they addressed like temporarily or?
There was a one specific piece that came out. And again, I was thinking of Royal Retreat too, but we talked about. We just felt as though there were some detriments to it that were going to affect the way to each other's teams. Kids not playing because of this and the other. That was what we meant about. We came to a resolution to table what had been proposed.
Okay.
Continue what we were doing for now and reassess the situation. It's all about getting standardization. Everybody doing it the same way. But it's like I told Kevin, we can't cook the code because Towne Wiffle deals with the points. Royal Retreat deals with two. We deal with three. So if you have a coach from Pine, he doesn't know a thing about kids in that case.
Exactly.
So it's different across the board. But we came to the decision to leave it as is for now for the upcoming backup holiday season that starts in January. And then readdress it mainly with the rec commission. Hopefully, they can do what they're supposed to do and they can start addressing these rules. And, but yes, we've come to a resolution temporarily, but will be redressed.
Pardon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want a clarification. Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have anything?
I have a quick question in regards to the rec commission. I guess I get a little bit confused about the procedures. I read the bylaws, but help explain to me, Mr. Barrett. So we've got the rec commission members. They vote on certain items. Does that mean that Kevin has to do what the rec commission? Because I know they're not Kevin's boss. I'm just wondering how like the procedurally it works.
Well, I'll let Matt, I mean, he's been attending meetings. But basically, they have, these are the rules that come back to staff. And I'll let Matt go ahead.
Basically, we look to them to provide guidance on how we develop the rules, how we standardize, you know, any changes need to be making, made in, you know, rules, seasons, you know, age groups, how they line up. And we've not been able to do that a lot because they just haven't met a lot over the last couple of years. So now that we have officers elected, we think that will change. We're certainly going to push for it to change. There are some rules, you know, because we do have the Withfield League. We've got, you know, Fort Chisel and Royal Retreat associations. We need some ways to push that together and make it mesh a little better than it is. So it would be useful to have the commission up and running the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
And I've got a follow-up question on that. With Bland County being involved, what's their financial contribution? Because we're talking about taxpayers of Withfield County, but we've allowed Bland County. So what's their financial contribution to this?
Bland, Bland was in it previously. And Mr. Williams could probably give me a little. They were in it several years ago, and then they sort of dropped out. They were into it for years. They were in the rec league program. And then their program sort of slid away. And then it came back in underneath the town. Now, if I'm understanding correctly, with the football season, Bland helped pay for some of the officials and things like that, which is the primary cost associated with it. And in the old days, that's what they used to do. They would have a certain game at Bland. There for a while, we stopped having games at Bland because of the bleacher concerns and other things. But they contributed towards the officials, which is obviously our largest expense, you know, prorating that out based on the teams and the games and everything else.
Well, sooner than later, I think that this board would like to see a breakdown of those financial contributions.
Okay. Including how Withfield and how we split the officials with Withfield and all that?
Well, the people of Withfield are still county citizens.
Yeah.
They pay county taxes. Bland County does not.
Correct.
That's my major concern. I don't know what everybody else's is, but I would like to see. You know, nothing lies free.
Right.
So.
Yeah, my major concern was that since we are getting back on track with having these rec commission meetings, you know, we've all appointed a member. I just want to make sure that they, they don't feel like they're going to. I hope, I hope they're able to take what they're hearing from their areas and bring it, and they're voting, and it's moving forward. You know, I hope we're getting back on track of that because, you know, you appoint someone. They've been blown up with emails and calls the last few weeks. And then they're like, well, what am I even on this board for? You know, so I just, I'm happy that we're getting back on track, and I hope it stays in the right direction.
So, Mr. Chairman, I got a follow-up to that as well. So I know we've got representation from all of us on the board, right? On the rec commission. Of course, Bland County, they shouldn't have nobody at the table.
They do not have anybody on the rec commission.
So they have to play by our rules regardless of what the rules are. We shouldn't be catering to them, correct?
I do not have anything, and we've catered to Bland in the process. They've asked to come in to help with us. I mean, just to have somewhere for their kids to be able to play.
They provided some input into the draft process that has been put together, but so has Wiffle.
Well, that goes back to my other question. What gives them right to give input because they're basically visitors?
Well, I think one of the things that.
And I have no, it's all about the kids. I have nothing against Bland County. But I'm not, I'm not certain why they give any input unless they're making a chunk of the financial contribution, not just helping out. That's.
That's where I'm at.
Okay, so I'm not wrong. At least according to one person.
I think it needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think we all agree that it's what it should be.
I mean, it would be like us if we went to Puygase County, and we play by their rules, we don't change their rules. If we go to Carroll County, it's the same way.
Well, we can't afford Jonathan's weed. All right, anything else? All right, well, thank you all for coming. We'll move on to the payment of invoices each board member has received in their package, a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I will entertain a motion to approve those invoices.
So may.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from December the tenth, twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion by, excuse me, Mr. Morgan. Second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to old business. We have our draft twenty twenty-five rules of procedure in our meeting holiday calendars. Is there anything to add to that? Or I assume that's just information only for the January meeting? All right. Move on to appointments. I know we've got a few appointments.
Yeah, that's also just informational to get ready for our January meeting. So just letting all of y'all know that the ones that are expiring December thirty-first to be contacting those members and look at bringing them, you know, who we're going to appoint in January.
Mr. Chairman, I have an appointment, if I may, please.
Go ahead, sir.
I have an appointment for the Mount Rogers Community Services Board. Ms. Christina Latham to replace, I forget the young lady that's coming off. But I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Mrs. Christina Latham for that seat, please, sir.
And that, that was Mount Rogers Community Services? Ms. Bartnik, I believe?
Bartnik, I think. Bartnik's the one that's coming off, that's correct.
And I'm sorry, what was the name again?
Christina Latham.
All right. Have a motion to appoint Ms. Christina Latham to Mount Rogers Community Services. I believe that starts January the first.
I think that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Anything else under appointments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Oh, I didn't realize it.
She came in. She came in right in time.
Right in time.
You got good timing. Anything else under old business? Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to reports. I don't see the treasurer, don't see the commissioner, don't see the sheriff. Move on to new business. We have our consent calendar. We've all received that in our board package. Y'all entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So may.
Have a motion, Bernard, the second by Mr. Smith. Any other questions on the consent calendar? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is we have a presentation by the Spiegel Fire Department. We've got Gus and another gentleman. Another gentleman.
Chief Whitlow.
Appreciate y'all listening. Gus is handing you out some of the stuff we're going to talk about. Shouldn't take us too long.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
We started getting some requests from FEMA and VDM, Department of Emergency Management, for the information related to the, to our hurricane response. And it, Assistant Chief Kenner here, and another officer or two sat down and started working on this. And it was quite a, it was quite an undertaking just to figure all these out. And as we were doing it, we thought, well, maybe we need to share this, let you all know some of the stuff that we did during, during this event, during and afterwards. During the twenty-four hours, basically, of the, of the storm, when we answered, what was that, twenty-four calls to service, honestly, probably double that. But those were the official calls that we were dispatched to during, during that time. We had fifteen trees down during that time, probably, probably.
Twice.
Probably.
Double that.
Yeah. We had to cut trees to get the trees down. Two power lines in the roadway. I only hit one of them with a truck, so. We did have two people stranded in their vehicles in water. That's pretty, pretty serious stuff there. One evacuation of a low light area that we used Christian Aid Ministry and Chesterfield Swiftwater Rescue Team to effect those rescues. That, that itself took probably four hours while we had other crews out and other calls. We did have a trench rescue. We assisted, I believe it was Freeze, with a, with a water rescue. Dealt with multiple vehicles abandoned in the water, and we did assist EMS one time. We totaled up our, our man-hours for the, for the entire event. And the best we could calculate it was one thousand nine hundred and fifteen hours. Four hundred and eighty-six of those hours were during the storm response. And then one thousand three hundred and eighty-one hours were staffing at the firehouse for distribution of supplies and then also assisting in, in storm relief. We staffed the firehouse twenty-four hours a day for seven straight days, mainly because the telephone lines were down in our area. Community internet was down. People couldn't contact nine one one. So we were their only contact really with the outside world. And we had a number of people come to the firehouse for emergencies. We've listed forty-eight, over forty-eight hours of community assistance. And just kind of a side note here, with the hours we spent would have been seventy-nine point seven nine days at twenty dollars an hour. That's thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. That's not a big question, side note. Don't yell. Our, like I said, most of this information and stuff we were being asked for from FEMA and VDM. So we just put it all together here. Our engine fifty, hours total, three. Tanker fifty-one, that's the twenty twenty-two tanker. We used it to block the road for about an hour that day. Rescue Engine fifty-two, which is our, the newest truck in our fleet. It was, it had just been put into service about seven days before this call, and it got broken really well that day, those days. It was, it was credited with fifteen hours of response. Utility fifty-five had nine hours during the post-storm effort. It also has about a forty-hour plus additional. Brush fifty-six had fourteen hours. And then Rescue Fifty-seven had six hours. Rescue Fifty-seven was actually taken out of service when we put Rescue Engine fifty-two in. So we were bringing trucks back in that were out, off, out of service to answer calls, to support. Our total tool hours equals about twenty-five hours, the best we could tell. And the generator hours at the firehouse, approximately forty hours. It asked us to assess the damage residents in our area. And we sat down and looked and best we could. There were in excess of forty-five homes that sustained significant damage in the Cripple Creek, Spiegel areas. And we did well in excess of a hundred and twenty-five welfare checks. That was, I remember us taking trucks and just going to checking on people, making sure they, they were doing okay, had what they needed. As far as distributions go, we, a lot of the stuff, I mean, it was, that was a tough day. So it was hard to keep up with everything. But we gave out about eight to nine pallets of water, probably two pallets of sports drinks, thirty-plus cleaning supply buckets. Thousands of dollars, including hygiene, food, hygiene supplies, baby food, diapers, baked goods. Food and waters, food, water, and cleaning supplies were given out until October twenty-fifth. So that's almost a month. Leftover supplies were sent to North Carolina and Tennessee flood victims. And the remainder of the food was placed in the blessing boxes at Spiegel Methodist Church. Now, all these supplies and things, we would have people come in. We'd have a car come into our firehouse to get supplies. And behind them, another car was pulling in, bringing us supplies. It was, it was quite a thing to witness in our community, how, how they really just poured in to help their neighbors. It was, it was amazing. We had, speaking of our community, Piglicious, the restaurant in Spiegel, Sweetwater Venue, In Growth Close, Robertson Hollow, Royal Retreat, and several local bankers and individuals kept us fed. Had it not been for that, we would have been in a little bit of trouble ourselves. They.
We would eat a lot of waffles.
Yeah. One night, the lady from Piglicious came to the firehouse about ten o'clock with a pork tenderloin she'd just taken off the smoker. And she said, I'm not open tomorrow, but I want to make sure y'all have something to eat. So, you know, that, that's, we saw a lot of that during, during this situation. We continued assisting with flood-related activities such as organizing cleanup and rebuilding efforts. Donations that were made during this incident will go towards preparing us for the next flood incident. During this, we saw, you know, we were prepared. We, for our normal stuff and a little bit more, but we saw some deficiencies that we have in equipment and training. And we, we took in a fair amount of donations, and we've spent a lot of that helping our community. But what money we have left, we're going to, we were out there with no life vest. We, you know, really deficient on some safety equipment and stuff. So we decided with the money that we had left over, it's going to go to get us ready for hopefully something we don't have to deal with very often. We need to keep our firefighters safe. Was that it? All right. I do, would like to say a few things of appreciation. Our, the county emergency management staff was phenomenal. I mean, they, they did everything they could, helping us arrange the water drop-offs and the food and bringing us equipment and supplies. The, the radio people kept our radios on. You know, when, when the telephones and internet went down, you're in the dark. And during Hugo, many years ago, we had no radios. You left, you left the firehouse and the rescue squad building. You had no.
It wasn't that many years ago. But go on.
Nineteen eighty-nine. But, you know.
It was before we got this new radio system.
Yes, praise the Lord, we had. Yes, praise the Lord, we had radios, I don't think we ever had one issue with our radios going down. It was, it was amazing, so, you know, big shout out to our radio people and emergency management people. But that pretty much sums up everything I needed to say. I really appreciate Matt and Stephen here for all, having the open door policy, anytime we have any questions or need anything, we know you all are just phone call away, having you guys watching our back, we appreciate it, so. Thank y'all and I believe that's all I have.
I just wanted to say thank you for all you've done for the state of Fire Department. We are in the best shape now than we have ever been and it's just because of y'all taking care of us, we really appreciate it.
We really appreciate you all.
Thank you all.
You know, I, I've said this in the past and, and we appreciate, um, the, the way you keep your equipment and the pride that you take in or take, you know, towards your equipment that, that we purchase, you know, it's, I've said it before and, you know, I'll say it again, I also appreciate the, the effort that Stephanie put in for this because I know neither one of y'all.
I think Gus did that.
Oh, did, I apologize. I apologize. Well, I, you know, um, but, uh, you know, I, I spent, I spent some time in, in Spiegel during the event, um, a, and of course, y'all are one of the, the communities that, that were hit the hardest, um, a, and you all just, I mean, y'all really set the standard for how y'all stepped up and, and not only, you know, addressed the, the, the situation, but the, the aftercare that, that you gave your community. So, you know, kudos, kudos to you. And before I forget, and Stephen, I, I think that we've done this before, but I, I may have just made it, did we not send a thank you letter to Chesterfield?
I believe, I think, I think a public information officer drafted something, I think it has gone to them, I will confirm that, uh, and, and I think there was a couple of other organizations as well, but Chester, but Chesterfield.
But I, well, yeah, but, um, um, but, um, you know, from, from this board, I don't know that we could have asked you folks, you, you went above and beyond what we would've ever, you know, I know you, you opened up your fire station for, you know, charging stations because people didn't have electricity and it was just, um, like I said, you, you really set the standard, you know, I know Ivanhoe, they done a bunch of stuff too because they were hit hard, um, but, um, yeah, so from, from this chair, thank you.
Little update on the money that we received from Oregon or from Washington State, we finally received that money and it has been distributed to seven of the hardest hit families. Good. Just let you know that. But there was money if you came from a long way, it was amazing. Thank y'all.
Thank you all.
Speaking of money, next item on Virginia is the, our agenda is the FY twenty-five third quarter appropriations. We've received that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the third quarter appropriations. So we'll have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Move on to staff reports, we have Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I only have one action update and that's to ask for your guidance on how you want to, uh, handle your review of the emergency operations plan. Uh, this is the plan that the state mandates that we have to have that guides how we operate when we're in emergencies and we were in our, our normal review period anyway when Hurricane Helene hit, so we were able to make some revisions based on things that we learned and experienced during the hurricane. Randy Zook has spent a lot of time, uh, working to update the plan over the last, uh, few months, it's about a hundred and twenty-seven pages long, we were able to cut it down, I think from about a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and twenty-seven, streamlined a few things, uh, but we need to know, uh, do you all just want us to send, send you that so you're able to, to review it, or do you want to review it in a formal setting?
I mean, I would assume, well, it, on your remote says refer to committee, I would assume just send it to the whole board, um, give us ample opportunity to review it and then we'll place it on the agenda, I don't know what anybody else thinks. I think it's too important to, to send to the committee.
Yeah, because that'll come from committee to the whole board anyway, so, yeah, I'll agree with that.
But I, I'd rather, me personally, I'd rather have more time to review it than.
Yeah, and send it to committee and then to the board, I'll agree.
Works for me.
Thank you. Do you have some other updates in my, uh, in my report unless you have any, uh, questions about those? We can move on to the next report.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? All right, move on to County Administrator, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, try to keep it short, no action items, uh, just a, a few things here, procurement ordinance, uh, Mr. Hankins drafted procurement ordinance, I reviewed it with County Attorney, uh, have made some revisions to it, I have sent it to our auditors, uh, they are reviewing it, uh, at this point in time, uh, plan on having it go over January fourteenth and also is gonna have it on the Budget Committee meeting if next Monday still works okay for the Budget Committee members, uh, we'll do it, discuss it next Monday as well before the meeting. Rest of items, information, I will just stress, the Barrett Mill Water Project is advertised and the bids are due on it for, for February third, um, and Austinville Sewer Repair Notice has issued to start, has an issue to proceed, uh, has been issued and, and everything is starting there, um, and a VRA loan for Fort Chiswell, if everything closed there, that project is, uh, getting ready to have a pre-construction meeting in, uh, January, so we will be staying busy there. One additional item that's not on here, uh, just to mention to you, was able to, uh, work out, uh, a, a exchange of land with Rural Tree Volunteer Emergency Services and adjoining landowner there for that, uh, bank cliff, uh, that they own there and that has exchanged hands already and then, uh, it is, uh, out of Rural Tree Volunteer Emergency Services name, so, just wanted to give you an update on it. This is, any questions on anything else, that's all, all I've got.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barrett? All right, Mr. Farland County, excuse me, County Attorney's not here. I'm sorry, my agenda cut off. I got a blank back page. Move on to board reports, we got the Water and Wastewater Committee.
Yes, Chairman, the Water and Wastewater Committee met on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four and recommended the following, number one, approving the engineering agreement with Pead and Portz LLC for the Spiegel Emergency Water Repairs Project.
All right, comes from committee, doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The last item is approving the engineering agreement with Pead and Portz LLC for the Silo Booster Station Replacement Project.
Again, comes from committee, doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Water and Wastewater Committee?
No, you did, Chairman.
All right, move on to Board of Supervisors time, Jesse or Mr. Burnett, since you're speaking, we'll start with you, sir.
Very well. I shared, uh, with the board an email I'd gotten from the Bear Springs Fire Department and I just wanted to take an opportunity to just respond real quick on a couple of points. One, uh, we discussed the vote grant within, with, in the board and made that decision probably midsummer and, and they didn't find out about it until December, mid-December, so I see an opportunity there for us to communicate, uh, with various departments. As always, we can always communicate better. Then another point I want to address is that, uh, I see, you know, we support fire trucks and EMS all abundantly, I mean, we are fantastic at that as a whole board and, and so, uh, I just want to, you know, I see an opportunity to sit with, you know, and discuss with departments exactly what our expectations are and, and, and then move forward and, uh, and I see no, of course, I see no reason that, uh, we can't get something in the budget for Bear Springs' new truck, uh, but I just, those are the points that I wanted to, to mention, uh, and that's all I had on that and, uh, and I had nothing else, Chairman.
All right, Ms. Lawson.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, Mr. Cook, I have nothing at this time. Mr. Smith?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
Of course you do.
Mr. Barrett, where do we stand on the open building inspector role?
They have done, uh, some initial interviews, um, but have not come forth to yet with the recommendation of a candidate for any follow-up on that.
Uh, Red Creek Road, um, there's some potholes, probably east of Paddlers and between Paddlers and Steelwell Road, it's pretty bad down there on that side.
Can I add something to that real quick? Mr. Barrett, if you'll tell VDoc after the flood, the whole road right before Paddlers has a lean to it and I know the water really got up under, I mean, it's, it may potentially be pretty rough because, yeah, if you're coming from.
North of Paddlers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's right.
And now it's got two potholes in it, so, um, it's pretty concerning. Thanks for bringing that up.
Uh, and then, um, Steelwell Road, I know it's, it's a gravel road and it'd be hard to machine this time of year, but it's, it's pretty beat up with potholes up to Beecher Lane, from Beecher Lane down to Red Creek Road. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, uh, uh, Tank Road, he's got, uh, well, he's got a bunch of potholes, but he's got some other problems too, it's the, the ditches and one thing and another, the water's running out in the road and so that's creating a lot of problems and also Drive Road's got a lot of, uh, potholes in it. And I was, I was curious, have we gotten any responses from FEMA or any of these other alphabet soup agencies that we've been talking to?
On, like, the, uh, we had a kickoff meeting on our public assistance request, uh, well, we, we've had two meetings, we had a kickoff meeting with them and then we had a more in-depth meeting with them, they came down to the, uh, law enforcement judicial, so, or the EOC room, um, they, they went through the process of how we would put our applications in, how we would start our applications, we gave them our paperwork, they had that, they'll come back to us with helping us and giving us guidance on how to put, combine that information together to put it in as, as one or two or three or four requests in the process, but that is ongoing, no funds have come back in yet, but they are meeting with us on the, the process and what we would need to do to, uh, submit and get reimbursement on our claims.
Is this what the county has requested or what private individuals?
That's what the county, on the public assistance side, what the county has requested. On the individual side, we have the numbers that they were giving us on those reports of what had been requested and the total numbers that had been approved through, throughout the areas, but they don't give specific individual numbers on that.
Have the generators been installed at the firehouses?
That they have, uh, Spiegel and, uh, Ivanhoe and, um, the, uh, East Station for EMS, all have their generators installed and are, uh, all operational, uh, the electrician was here last week to do some cleanup work, uh, there were some, uh, the grounding rods at, uh, Ivanhoe Fire Department weren't fully, uh, covered over the way they should've been, so they came back and redid those, um, the only thing that's left is, um, the seeding, they're gonna have to come back in the spring and, uh, seed the areas that they, they disturbed, but they know that they're gonna do that.
And the last thing I've got is, uh, the accounting software, is the RFP gone out for that?
The, um, it hasn't, the, the one for the treasurer and the commissioner has not gone out, um, I am waiting to meet with them, of course, with the commissioner having his struggles when, when the tickets went out and all that, they are covered up, um, we have a draft one that we have used in other counties, one to put together that, that we are cleaning it up, the main part of it, there's a table in it that lists all of the, I'll call it interactions or bridges that you have to have in place with this software, so like, you've got to make certain how this interacts with DMV, get your downloads from DMV, how it gets it from, how you work with DMV on the stop, uh, the, the stop fees and, and the license holds and things like that, how it communicates, uh, with JD Power on the downloads, how it communicates with Vision, those are all the things that I need the tre, commissioner and the treasurer's assistance with in making sure we have a list of everything that this software package needs to communicate with the, or meets to communicate back and forth and how it communicates back and forth, so we have all those things in the RFP so the companies can respond to that.
Okay, that's.
It's about, I don't know, forty or fifty pages long, I mean, it's a, it, it may, it's thirty or forty, I don't remember how, but it's, it's in-depth with a lot of that information that needs to, that, for the companies to come back to give us a, a good understanding of exactly what they could do and how they interlink between the systems.
Do we have any idea of how long it's gonna take once the RFP is sent out for them to?
No, and, and some of them may come back in off of cooperative procurement, which could speed up the prime frame in the process and then it'll depend on those companies of what their, what their timeframe is for implementation, what, what they usually recommend, how long it takes to pull all the data out, how long it takes to implement the data, all that, that will be based upon the company that we choose.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, wanna make sure Jesse understands that the fiasco over Bearin Springs with the fire department, Jesse, he was notified, he was offered a truck, he refused it, so we did communicate that to him and as far as the rock boat goes, he'd come to Budget Committee about two months ago and he was notified shortly about, after that meeting that we were not gonna accept that of it for that way. So we weren't trying to hide anything from him, we, I mean, he knew straight up, so that's kinda where that stands. Go ahead.
I, I was just saying we was having opportunities.
Well, and I'll agree with the opportunities, but the, the opportunity was there and we communicated that, so I don't see a failure on our part as a board going back to him, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
I wasn't saying that at all and I apologize if anybody got that from what I'd said.
And you don't, I mean, you don't need to apologize to anybody, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
All right, anything else, Mr. Terry?
And Happy New Year, that's all I've got, sir, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Barrett, uh, several, or a couple, three meetings ago, um, I asked if we set up a meeting with, uh, Congressman Griffin's office and, and other elected officials to discuss how we could move the Blue Star Project ahead, uh, can you give me an update on that? Has that, has that been sent out yet?
The, the meeting has not been set up yet, I have met with David on it, I have, uh, contacted, um, I, I contacted one of the senator's office for some information regarding our meeting that we had with Blue Star that they had just, that Blue Star indicated they had just met with that senator's office.
No, excuse me, let me, I, I asked that you send out a request that we meet, have you done that?
No, I have not, you requested it be set up for the beginning of the year and I was going to do that, sir, I have not done it yet, I am working on that.
It's five days, six days away, sir, till the first of the year, not the speed of government. This is a lot of money on the line.
Absolutely.
So, okay, so you haven't done it?
No, sir, and a, a, a direct invitation has not gone out to Congressman Griffin's office.
The next item we have on the agenda is a closed session under two-point-two-thirty-seven-eleven A-one, discussion of personnel matters, County Administration, Recreation Director, and I've had a request from another board member to add, um, the building inspector, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook? Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. And before we take the vote, can we dismiss Ms. Collins, because this may be a lengthy session? Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry.
Apologize. All right, any other questions or discussion with the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're now on closed session. Motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're now back in open session and on the record, Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification of the closed meeting.
Yes, sir. Whereas the West County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the, with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the West County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting were heard, discussed, and are considered by the West County Board of Supervisors. Then I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Terry to ratify the certification, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook? Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett. All right, so approved. Is there anything else to come before the board? All right, hearing none, we'll be adjourned, have a good New Year.